Andover Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, we'll start with a roll call. Alex?
Alex Zarchin.
Gary Israel.
Brian Littback.
Bill Schnaber.
Lynn Heath.
All right. Item number one, complete. Well, two. Number three, we have some minutes from August 21st. I will be abstaining as I was not here. So I'll look for someone to make a motion.
And I haven't read these already either, so... I'll count on you guys.
I thought you guys would have read this by now.
Oh, hell.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes from the Tuesday, August 21st, 2018.
All right, we have a motion by William Schnaber and...
Second.
A second by Gary Israel. All in favor, say aye.
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 That didn't sound like unanimous, and one abstention. All right. We have our committee reports. Any questions, comments, or... Of staff on those? All right, seeing none, we'll keep this rolling along. Item number five. We have a PUD amendment. It says, uh... Item number five, case number Z-2018-05. Uh, this is a proposed amendment to Cornerstone addition preliminary planned PUD for parcel six. And Cornerstone medical addition final PUD to allow for acute surgical center as permitted... Uh, as a permitted use in the B3 central shopping district. Again, we have... Uh, there's a item that'll go to the governing body, so if anybody wants to make sure they express their views and concerns to this body, but also be detailed enough that it captures for the governing body as well. Start with any disqualifications on this, Planning Commission?
No.
No.
None here? And, uh... We do have a quorum. This item was advertised in the Butler County Times Gazette on August 25th, 2018, and all notices were mailed to the applicant. And 22 real property owners of record in the area of the notification on August 21st, 2018. And I'll declare 20 days has elapsed, and unless anybody's here to speak the contrary, we'll move along. Any ex parte communication?
No.
No.
None here?
Nope.
All right, so I'll call on Les. And do you have anything to add to our report here?
No, no real substance here. This is a pretty routine amendment. As you know, the... The, uh... Medical Center was one of the first developments in the Cornerstone subdivision. And, uh, over the years, they've added a couple of medical office buildings. And now they're moving into this acute care center, surgery center. Uh, they've had a tremendous success, and I don't know if you've ever been up there, but that's a... The Medical Center's a really busy place, and we think this'll be a great, uh... A great addition to, uh, kind of separate some of those ambulatory-type surgeries that are in and out in the day that don't require overnight stays.
And will they be using it? Have you seen any site plans or notion of they're gonna use the whole site, or how's that shape up?
It doesn't use the entire 10-acre parcel.
Okay. Just curious. Any other questions of staff?
None here?
Nope.
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll ask the applicant to... If you have anything else to add, or... Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Okay. So far, so good. Um, public comment? Anyone from the public like to speak on this item? We'll open it and close it, seeing none. I guess now would be a good time to deliberate any questions or concerns you might have on this item. Any concerns?
Nope. They got a good reputation.
Okay. Well, if, uh... This is an amendment item, and so it will, um... Les, maybe just clarify this, will go to the governing body?
Yes, this would result in a ordinance that amends the permitted uses in the planned unit development parcel.
And so fortunately, we get to go through some findings and factors.
Yep.
All right. Anyone want to volunteer to go through the findings and factors, as far as reading it?
I think William should do that.
All right, Will. You are...
Thank you, Gary. Mr. Israel.
Lucky guy.
I like hearing your voice.
Good job.
All right. Factors and findings. One, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? See adjacent land uses on page 1 of 4.
Noted.
Okay. Yes, no?
I think it's... I think it's just noted there's a medical office.
And it's appropriate.
And appropriate.
All right. Two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? Again, see adjacent zoning on page 1 of 4. Noted? Three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration?
I think not.
No?
No.
Four, would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations?
Think not.
Nope.
No. Five, is the request caused by changed or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such changed or changing conditions? Kansas Medical Center has expanded to the limits of the existing property. For staff. An agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent reputation, too.
Six, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist? Or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Staff, all of the public utilities and streets are in place and adequate. Agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Staff, uh, subject property is already platted. No. Okay. Concur with no?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes.
Eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property? Staff says yes, screening of the adjacent Prairie Point multifamily residential development is required. Concur?
Yes.
Yes.
Number nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available, or not available, for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? Staff mentions no. Concur with that?
Yes.
I agree.
Agreed.
Ten, if the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? Staff says yes, the overwhelming success of the Kansas Medical Center has prompted the owners to expand with an ambulatory surgery center for patients that are more of a planned walk-in, walk-out procedure. The expansion will provide both jobs and services to the area. Concur?
Concur with staff?
Yes.
Yes.
Eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted?
Yes.
Staff, concur? Yes.
Yes.
Twelve, to what extent would removal of the restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Staff, no... Staff perceives no change in the effects as commercial to the other permitted business uses. Noted?
Concur. Agree.
Thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? Concur with staff, yes?
Yes. Yes. Agreed.
Fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan?
Yes.
Concur?
Yep.
Yes. Fifteen, what is the nature of the support or opposition to the request? No, uh... No opposition at this time?
None.
Agreed.
Okay, agree? Sixteen, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in its evaluation? Approval as applied for by staff? Concur?
Yes.
Yes.
Seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request?
There's a high relative gain.
It is for us.
Now, how you answer it, that's the question, but...
That one is worded so convoluted.
Does it gain... Think about it, is it weighted towards the... The public health and safety?
Which...
As opposed to the hardship?
Hardship is approving it. So, but the hardship, I mean, quote, what they consider the hardship is gonna be an improvement on public health, safety, and general welfare also. Yep. You always have to have one question in there like this.
Staff doesn't perceive any loss to the public health, safety, and general welfare.
I agree 100%.
And I... Okay, I would agree.
Yes.
Concur?
Yes.
I agree.
Yep.
Okay.
Got those marked already, then?
Yep. Okay. I've noted item five. 10, 14, and 15 as reason to support. If anybody has any others, I'd gladly add those.
I'm sorry, you said 5, 10, 14, and...
5, 14, and 15. Anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that after having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the rezoning, I, Gary Israel, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z-2018-05 be approved to add acute surgical center as a permitted use in parcel six of the Cornerstone addition preliminary planned unit development plan based on the findings of the Planning Commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing based on factors five, 14, and 15.
Okay.
I second that motion.
We have a motion by Gary Israel, and a motion by William Schnaber. Any other deliberation? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
All members say aye. I like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we recess the Planning Commission and convene the Board of Zoning Appeals.
We have a motion by Lynn Heath, and a second by...
Second. I'll second the motion.
And we have a second by Alex. And so we are now... All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. Item number six, uh, we have a Board of Zoning Appeal item here. This is item number six, BZA-V-2018-04. And we have a variance request for, uh, section 10-107 of the city zoning regulations requesting a variance of 2,200 square feet from the required 200 square feet maximum floor area for an accessory structure, uh, used extensively for storage permitted in section 6-100B3, and a variance of 2,000 square feet from the required 400 square foot maximum aggregate total floor area for the accessory structure permitted by section, uh, 6-100C4 for the purpose of constructing a 2,400 square foot accessory structure, storage structure, on properties zoned as R3 multifamily residential district, and generally located at 610 South Ruth Avenue, Andover, Kansas. Okay. We'll go through the usual list of criteria here. Any disqualifications?
No.
No.
Okay, none here. And I'll again note... Make notice that, uh... This was published on the Butler County Times Gazette on August 25th, 2018, and all notices were made... Mailed to the applicant, and 11 owners of records of real property in the area of notification on August 21st. Uh, the record shows that 20 days has elapsed, and therefore, I'll declare that proper notification has been given. Any ex parte communication on this case?
No.
No.
None here. All right, Les.
As I noted in the staff comments on this, uh, recently you held a public hearing on the rezoning of this property. The Planning Commission recommended that the zone not be changed to R3 multifamily. When it got to the city council, the city council overturned that recommendation and changed the zoning to R3 multifamily with a protective overlay that limited the construction to one two-family dwelling. So it kind of... Kind of, uh... eased the discussion that was in front of the Planning Commission about how many units could be on it, and parking, and access, and so forth, so... It now has the zoning for that duplex and in that public hearing before the Planning Commission, and again at the city council, the applicant stated that he would like to build a storage building on the property that he would use for his rental business. This is not the only rental house that he will have, and he needs some space to keep tools and extra appliances and so forth. You'll notice on the aerial photograph that adjacent to the backyard of this property, there's a large building that's actually, uh, was zoned in the county industrial. It's some sort of a truck repair shop. It's about 2,800 square feet. And just up to the upper right corner of that photo, there are two storage buildings that are about 3,700 square feet each. And then just off left side of the aerial photo, there are a couple of houses in the neighborhood that have, uh, accessory buildings in the 1,600 square foot for just hobby workshops.
Only thing that seems odd to me in this case is that we just heard it, and had there been... It seems like there should have been some more materials brought at that time that's saying that they're gonna have this other item that they need a variance on. I guess variances are traditionally hardships, and, um, you know, I... I just would like a little background on that.
If you remember during that discussion, originally, the applicant intended to build multiple buildings on this lot. And the city council granted the zoning, but limited it to one two-family dwelling on a half-acre lot.
Okay. Any more questions of staff at this time?
I don't think so, none here.
Not right now.
Okay, good. Uh, we have, uh, the applicant. Make your presentation, and, uh, don't forget to give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Sure. I'm Jim Ackerman with Eagle Investments. Address is 14601 East Sundance in Wichita. I do have some handouts I'd like to give you guys, just to show you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you for that house.
Thank you.
Looks pretty clean.
On that first page, you'll see what the house looked like when I bought it. Second picture is just simply the current state of the lot. That house has been removed, the land's been worked. Uh, I went to expense of putting privacy fencing up on both sides, the north and the south of that property at my own expense and to benefit the neighbors. Bottom picture is simply the duplex I planned on building there. Something similar to that. Second page is kind of gives you a layout of where I plan to put it.
So it's gonna be turned on its side?
Towards the...
North?
The east.
Oh, I'm sorry, the east.
Yeah, it'll be the east, pretty much where that other industrial building is.
With the entrances facing south?
Interests, I plan on putting three garage doors facing west.
Okay, and your storage?
Yeah. Yes.
And are you planning to pave this turning area where the garage doors would be?
Um, it'll be probably paved up to the duplex, then gravel back there, would be my anticipation.
Are you objectionable to paving it? This is an urban area, and I think with, uh, urban areas, they should be paved for our codes and regulations on R3 property.
Well, that... Well... The expense of that would be quite a bit, and you're looking at that dirt road there in that area that's, you know, pretty... You know? If I had to, I'd probably look at it, you know? It's not the way the rest there is. There's no paving going back to any of the other outbuildings there, though.
Sure, I think... I think the idea is we're trying to renew the area with new construction and things like that.
I'd say look at the front page and see what I'm planning on doing there.
Sure.
What's already been done.
Jim, would you have any paving in front of your building in front of the three overhead doors?
There would be some concrete extending out from the building. I haven't...
So it's kind of connecting the dots, really, is all it is?
Yeah. That's what it would be doing, is connecting from the driveway into the duplex into the pad in front of the storage building.
Is there any visual fencing that would separate the two buildings from the residence to the storage building?
Um, I can easily do that.
Bill, would trees and shrubbery meet your criteria of having some separation?
I think it'd probably be even better, more... More applicable than, uh, you know, more fence there.
Than another fence?
Yeah.
What's gonna be the planned construction type on the storage building?
I'd play steel... A steel building, I plan.
Well, that's with Frye Street being annexed into the city of Andover, just to the... To the north a bit there. Is there any need for a right-of-way on the backside of that? So it's a... It looks like it's only a 30-foot right-of-way for Frye Street.
The existing Frye Street is all on the east side of the quarter section line.
Okay. But, uh, so is 30-foot adequate for maintaining a road through there?
No. No, by no means would that be adequate.
So would it be... Uh, so we... Should we be imposing a rear setback on this thing at some distance to protect the right-of-way potential for the future?
You're following my thoughts exactly, that perhaps rather than allow this building to go as close as five feet to that rear yard line, which the zoning regulations would allow, that perhaps we should come up with a minimum setback off of the rear line somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, 35 or 40 feet.
I had sketched out like 40-foot, and that seemed to be so... Close to sufficient.
The drip line of the hedge row will take up 20 to 25 feet.
Right. Agreed. Um, any side setback issues that you might recommend, Les?
No, the setbacks for the district would be adequate on the sides.
I know I was looking at the storage units, and I know it's a special use in R3, uh, that we're not going for a special use, but they call for a 35-foot setback on all sides. I wanted to know if we would be looking at maybe a 20-foot setback and as opposed to like a 35-foot setback on the sides? There is still room with that, you know, from my estimation here.
Lots of 100-foot lot.
That gives you right on the money.
60-foot building, so that... That would essentially...
Center.
Center the building in the lot.
Right. And I think, given the size that he's proposing, there's not really one... Another size quite this big, except for on the other side of the development, which that parcel has four acres. Well, four, yeah. It's basically four times the size of this lot. This is only a half-acre lot. This is actually one of the smallest lots in all the development over there of the Met... Meta Acres, I believe. Mecca Acres. So I think... I think, in my opinion, I think a 20-foot setback would be appropriate and reasonable, and I don't think it would impose a hardship on the applicant.
May I clarify? It says equipment storage. Your rental business is on buildings, residences, and not...
Residential buildings.
Not equipment.
No, not equipment.
Okay.
I'll have personal stuff there. I have a boat and a car, that kind of deal, too, but it's... So...
Just as I look through it, those are my only comments as far as needing paved access and the 20-foot side setbacks and a rear 40-foot setback.
I guess I'm not so much concerned as... I would like to see a paved area in front of the structure, but I don't know that the paved road all the way back to it is...
Yeah, by the time you move it forward, there's... We're not talking much difference in pavement. It's generally at the back one-third of the bill... Of the lot. And the house takes up the front one-third, so you're just connecting the dots.
So essentially, to remove it up to almost, uh, front wall where the back wall will be, there'd be a lot of room behind this building, huh?
Yeah. There'd be 40-foot behind the building. And a head... Well, the hedge row's been limbed up and such.
Yeah.
You're saying 40 feet here?
Right. And 20 on the sides.
On the sides.
Yeah. So it just centers the building.
Well, it'd be...
We gotta go in there, see anything else?
That's all the questions I had.
That's all the questions or comments I had.
No, that's everything I had.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We do have a few findings to go through here as well. There is, uh, does this evidence demonstrate items one through four, and then specific conditions to meet items one through five?
I'll go ahead and read.
Thank you.
Background information, uh, does the evidence demonstrate that, one, the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon or for the owner, less see, or occupant, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the provisions of these regulations were literally enforced? Because the subject property has adequate space to provide required separation, and the rear yard abuts an industrial building of similar size. Two, the request for variance is not based exclusively upon a desire of the owner, less see, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property, because the owner desires to provide indoor storage of equipment and materials used in his rental business. Three, the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the subject property is located, because the subject property has adequate space to provide required separation, and the rear yard abuts to an industrial building of similar size. And number four, the proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increase congestion on public streets or roads, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Again, because the subject property has adequate space to provide required separation, and the rear yard abuts an industrial building of similar size.
All right.
Okay.
I think, uh, do we all agree that, uh, that the evidence demonstrates the fact that we can move forward to the specific conditions being met?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, moving on.
Specified conditions to be met, the board may grant a variance upon specific written findings of fact, based upon the particular evidence presented at the hearing, so that all five of the conditions required by KSA twelve dash seven five nine E have been met, which are listed below. If any of the conditions cannot be met, the condition or conditions needed to be rewarded from a positive to a negative statement, and the variance not granted. One, that the variance requested arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question, and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant, because the subject property has adequate space to provide required separation, and the rear yard abuts an industrial building of similar size.
Agreed.
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 Concur. Two, that granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents, because the subject property has adequate space to provide required separation, and the rear yard abuts an industrial building of similar size. Agree?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Three, that strict application of the provisions of these regulations, from which a variance is requested, will constitute an unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application. Again, because the subject property has adequate space to provide required separation, and the rear yard abuts an industrial building of similar size.
Agreed.
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 Four, that the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare, because the subject property has inadequate space to provide required separation, and the rear yard abuts an industrial building of similar size. Agree?
Yes.
Agreed.
I think agreed as modified.
As modified?
Yeah.
Five, that granting the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these regulations. Again, because the subject property has adequate space to provide required separation, and the rear yard abuts an industrial building of similar size.
I think, again, as modified with the discussed items.
Okay, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question for the applicant. Jim, how tall is this storage building gonna be?
I don't know the exact number, my plan is to have fourteen-foot tall doors, so...
Twenty-one?
Probably for the pitch and rub, and the height of the building is not that.
If we're looking to limit the height to a certain height?
I'm just curious, you know, if we allowed him to build this building, it could be, he could do a two-story building, because we haven't put any specifications on it.
I think, I think a single-story building is in order.
The maximum height for the zoning district is thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Thanks.
And the other structures in the area?
Mm-huh.
They're all, I think they're pretty close to what he's planning on, then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have any major issues there. All right. So we have some items that we talked about, the side setbacks, rear setbacks, and paved surfaces to conform to our municipality.
And some planting between...
And some planting.
The duplex and the structure, the storage building, kinda screen that.
Yeah. Well, I think you, if anything, you would screen the neighbor's property, as opposed to internally.
Well, if I'm living in one of the duplexes, I think I'm gonna have some windows, there're gonna be...
I think he's already got fencing, doesn't he?
Doesn't?
Yeah, but if I'm in that...
On the sides, he does.
No, that's, that's why I brought, yeah, that up.
Yeah, but if I'm in the east duplex, and I've got windows out there, I'm gonna be looking right at the storage building.
Yeah, I, I kinda feel like that's his own prerogative, in my opinion, that if he wants to screen, I'd be more inclined to screen, but I, he's already got a, a screening fence, that's, he's already built, uh...
Yeah, on the north and south side.
And, uh, the hedgerow on the, on the east, I, I would just, uh, if we're gonna do anything, I would say we just require that screening be in place on north, south, south and, and east sides, uh, of the property line, and, and not screen internally. If he wants to screen those, in my opinion, uh, that's his prerogative. I don't wanna get into the, to the weeds, so to speak, that's, it's kinda, I feel like that's his, he's asking for the variance, I, that's my thoughts on that, but, you know, I'll yield to any other decisions of the body here, of course.
Mm-huh.
Screening?
Well, I'd like to see it, but I'm not gonna force him to do it.
Sure. Anybody else on screening items? I think he obviously has, uh, the will to put up a fence, he has put up a fence. I think, you know, that shows good faith. I think it should be, uh, a requirement, given the, the size of this structure that he's proposing. If it was a smaller structure, I wouldn't have as, uh, as much of a issue with not screening it, but it's a, it's gonna be bigger than a lot of the houses around there, so, um, I think, I think it's a, a good idea from a screening standpoint to screen that, that property, which he has done.
Yep.
Yes.
So making that a requirement to run with the land as well. Okay. If there's no other comments or discussion, entertain a motion. Keep this mo, meeting moving along here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, and after having considered the evidence at the hearing, and determined that the findings of the fact in the variance report have been found to exist to support all five conditions set out in section ten dash ten seven, or one hundred seven D-one of the zoning regulations, and KS, KSA twelve dash seven five nine E of the state statutes, which are necessary for granting of a variance, I, Gary Israel, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA dash B dash two zero one eight dash zero four, as modified, subject to the conditions listed in the report, and that would be that there's a twenty-foot setback on the north and south side of the storage structure, a forty-foot setback to the rear, and that there be paving between the duplex and the pad for the storage structure.
Screening?
Okay.
He's already got the screening on the north and south and the hedgerow, it's already there.
We have a motion and a second. A motion by Gary Israel, second by Lynn Heath. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Brings us to item, we have a mo, motion for, uh...
I'd make a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
A motion by Gary, and a, a second by, uh, William. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. We're back onto the Planning Commission, we're item number seven. And this is a plat, both a, well, a final plat, and, uh, I believe a pre-plat as well. Um, so we have some subdivision committee minutes from the September eleventh committee meeting. I don't know if, if those of you who weren't there, if you had a time to re, read through those, I think, uh, the next question I would have is of staff, and on these two plats, or the, the final plat and preliminary plat, is everything in order, uh, moving forward from the, that date?
Yes, the applicant has, uh, provided all of the additional items that were in the city engineers' report, and, and clarified those that were on the checklist for the preliminary plat. Just today, we got petitions for improvements of the streets, and I believe the water line around the perimeter also, that will be, uh, debated out with the city council.
Okay, so there's, there is some contention on that, is that right? Or is, everything is in, I guess if there's petitions, everything's in order, then?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And Gary and I, we're in attendance, and then Alex, you showed up, or no?
I was not in attendance for this part of the subdivision.
Okay. Yeah, everything looks in order to me, and, uh, you know, unless there's any questions of the applicant, if the applicant wants to, to speak on a, item, uh, or any aspect of it, um, I would, uh, look, call the vote, if there is no questions or comments of staff or of the applicant.
Run here.
Uh, I do have one question. I've noticed that there's been a, I guess, a counting on cars going on on Thirteenth Street the last few days. Is that by the city, or requested by Butler County, the, the college?
Those counters belong to our street department.
Okay.
How long will that counting be going on?
We normally leave those out about a week.
Okay.
One of the discussions that we had was that the, the counts for the plat took place when school was out in summer session, so now we're gonna compare those against the in-session and, and see, uh, how they mesh, projections versus actual.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant or of staff? Okay. Seek a motion from...
We did one. Which one you want?
Uh, we're looking for a motion on item seven.
On the final?
And I think we can take both final and preliminary in one motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, accept the Butler County Community College preliminary and final plat.
I'll second.
We have a motion by William Schnauer, and a second by Lynn Heath. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. A motion passes unanimously. All right. This next item I'll be abstaining from, um, possibly, William, if you would want to present that item?
Good.
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, item number eight, review, final PUD for Phase Six of the Flint Hills National Edition. Staff and subdivision committee recommend approval of the preliminary and final plats. Wes, any comments in addition?
We really don't have any additional comments, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth between, uh, city engineer, staff, subdivision committee, details on drainage, uh, easement conflicts, that I think we have all worked out after our, uh, one-month delay in the process, so I think we're prepared to support the final plat.
Okay. Questions? For staff?
Nope.
Okay. Ready to move on with approval? I have a motion.
Well, I'd make a motion to accept the final planned unit development plan for Phase Six of the Flint Hills National Edition.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, here, Israel and Alec. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Unanis, unanimous decision?
One abstention.
Oh, and one, I'm sorry.
Jason wants to...
I, I just wanted to mention, I, I appreciate this, and, uh, I know the developers, they're looking forward to, uh, wrapping up the last phase of construction anyhow in the residential, and I did wanna let you know that we appreciate staff's willingness to work through some, I don't know if they're unusual circumstances, but given the nature of kinda the subdivision, and, uh, some of the amenities that they're doing in the way of berms and such, it, uh, helps us tremendously to get down the road and, and get construction started sooner while we sort through the little finite details of, that we need to do, so anyhow, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Turn it back over to you, Brian.
Yes, thank you. I think that takes us to the last item, which would be member, or second to last item, member items? Member items.
Okay.
Oh, no, maybe.
All right, none over here? Okay. Staff, you have any items? I think we covered them in advance of the meeting. All right, well, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All right.
I'll second it.
We have...
Plenty of seconds.
We have Lynn, we'll, we'll give Lynn a second.
Yeah, Lynn's.
Thank you, Lynn, and thank you, William. And all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.